I'm going to call to order the November 3 meeting of the West Sacramento City Council and Redevelopment Agency. I'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which tonight is going to be led by city council member-elect, sort of, assuming the results get finalized. Chris Ledesma?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the name of justice, law, and order.
All right, welcome, Mr. Ledesma, and congratulations to council member Mark Johannesen. We'll be taking up the certification of election results at a later time because the results have not yet been certified by the county clerk. So we're going to proceed -- the council did not meet in closed session, so we're going to proceed to our general administration agenda, item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. There are cards, right? All right, we do ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other item this evening to please fill out one of the yellow cards. It's available at the front door. In front of the city clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everyone has the chance to be heard, and so we ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. Also in front of the clerk is a flip chart that indicates which item on the agenda we're considering in any particular moment. We do ask that for folks speaking that there not be any applause or boos or cat calls and that we maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers. So with that, we have a couple of requests to speak under -- we have one request to speak under item 1, and it's by Mike Fangzhu. Welcome.
Mike Fangzhu, for the record, first, congratulations on the election. This is my first election after becoming a resident of the city, so I'm very proud that I voted for the mayor and for the members of the city council. My question for the city council is whether the city has -- is a member of the Let's Move City. It's an initiative started by First Lady Obama, and if not, I'd like to request that the city of West Sacramento become a member of Let's Move City. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I don't know if the city manager has information on the initiative. I do. The First Lady presented on Let's Move at the US -- at the last meeting of the US Conference of Mayors, so I plan to bring it before during strategic planning retreat, but you may have other information about it. Okay. All right, so well, it's on our punch list. We take up new initiatives at our strategic planning process that happens in January after the new council gets seated. All right, thank you. All right, that brings us then to item 1B, which is council communications. Are there any reports or other communications this evening? Mr. Johannesen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Yolo County City of West Sacramento Two-by-Two met on October 27. The main issue of discussion there was the current moratorium on the conversion of ag land to habitat restoration from outside development. As you probably all know, there's a moratorium on that process right now, and the county, I think, is pursuing extending that moratorium and then going to continued use permit process in order, and so that's in the process right now. And the point of all that is just to -- for the county to take control of how habitat restoration works and to be able to preserve ag land. On the 26th, I attended a presentation at the Port of Stockton on our Mayrad, the Tiger Grant, $30 million Tiger Grant award that we received for our maritime highway. And as you all recall, that basically is allowing -- going to allow the implementation of a barging service between the Port of Oakland, Port of Stockton, and Port of Sacramento, West Sacramento. The advantages are going to be reducing the truckloads on the freeways and also providing jobs. I think the estimate was just that project alone is 500 jobs, and then along with what we're developing in terms of the wood pellet facility and other businesses that are coming in port, it looks like it's around 3,000 jobs. So we were joined there actually by the Maritime Administrator David Matsuda, along with Congressman Jerry McErnie and Mike Thompson, Lois Wolke, and of course, the mayor of Stockton.
Thank you, Mr. Johannesen. Mr. Kristoff?
Yes. A couple of weeks ago, I attended the SAC Regional Meeting, and there's really one issue that wasn't of any consequence, and of course, that's the update on the discharge water It's a very, very large issue, and the reason it is so large is because of the potential for our sewer bills to increase dramatically. And so SAC Regional has taken a very, very close look at this. Everybody on the SAC Regional Board seems to be very, very concerned, and so they're going through the scientific processes, the appeal processes, and all of the other kinds of things that go on, because I think even the people that do the state, I think they understand that an increase of $25 to $50 per person per month on a sewer bill is going to be devastating. It's a big number, so I think everybody's taken a look at it, and that was the major topic of discussion. We did have a JPA flood meeting, really nothing of any consequence to report back to the public and report back to my board -- or the board here. We're moving along. The two reaches that we should have done by next year by High Patrol Academy and by the groupie development, so we're moving forward on those. We should start to see some construction. We've had some very, very good contacts with the state as far as the core tree policy, as far as removal of all of that. There seems to be some movement in all of that, and there may be some other instances where tree removal may be necessary, but for those two projects, it seems that they're pretty much on track, and everybody seems to have come to some kind of an agreement. Then, of course, the next big test is going to be the port property, the setback levies, and all of those other kinds of things, but we're going to try to move forward as quickly as we possibly can because we realize that every year that passes by, the percentages of some catastrophic disaster continues to increase. So working very hard, very fast on all of those issues.
Thank you, Mr. Kristoff. And Mayor President Viegas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple real quickly. Wanted to -- we'll get more information from Stan Dean who's here this evening regarding our -- he's the district engineer for the Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District, but just to share with the council a couple of things that we took up on October 27, just informational items, one of which was there was a stake -- another regional stakeholders' meeting yesterday -- Monday, I believe it was, because I think I've been keeping the council pretty up to speed on what's been happening with our NPDS permit and all the interest in terms of what the state water quality control board has said the cost might be. So a lot of folks are interested in what those rates might be that Mr. Kristoff just alluded to. So I think those meetings have been actually very well attended. The first one was well -- very well attended, and I believe Monday's was as well. Another issue that was facing us as a result of this ongoing discussion is the bonding agencies have slightly downgraded our ratings, again, because of the potential costs of, you know, the work that would have to happen to the plant. And I think we'll get a little bit of information on this this evening as well, and that is the state water contractors have sort of upped the ante a little bit, and they've begun to really politicize the issue and begin to -- have begun to sort of make some noise about what they perceive to be an overinflated cost associated with what we are determining the cost to be with the plant. So they're starting their -- and I think as the council's aware, the contractors from down south in the Central Valley are the ones that have made the most amount of noise regarding our permit and what we should be doing here, so more to come on that. I did also want to share with the council an interesting evening that I had last night, aside from what many folks experienced. City Clerk Chris Rankin and I actually spent a good portion of the evening with the county clerk's office, in part because I think the council recalls we've expressed our frustration over the poll. The results of elections on election night seem to come quite slow, and when you look all the way all up and down the state, returns seem to come a lot quicker in everywhere but Yolo County. So I think about a year ago, the city -- the county clerk came and explained in part what they do and what the process is, and I think there was some relief understanding what -- how difficult it is to get the ballots counted and get them posted. Long story short, we took advantage of the opportunity that was extended to us to join her and watch whether the ballots are counted, and I really -- and I won't speak for the city clerk, but I will speak for myself in terms of what I observed, and it was extremely, extremely frustrating to watch the system in place for Yolo County. I thought I understood it based on what was explained to us in public testimony about a year ago. I thought I understood it based on what was explained to us in written form as a follow-up to our request, which we received here, the council did, and what was observed was just, you know, the -- I'm at a loss of words of how to explain, but the system itself, the process, I should say, essentially comes to a grinding halt for a variety of very -- a variety of issues. And so despite the fact, and I'll say that the staff that are there work extremely hard, and there's a whole lot of people that are in their work, and the process that's set up to count the ballots and to actually post the returns, I don't even know how to explain it. It just is just grueling to see, and it was extremely frustrating, and I think most folks know that by midnight, when most folks, certainly throughout the region, but throughout the state, had posted their results, we didn't have much of anything. And every time we asked questions, the answers seemed to be okay, but it led to more questions than answers, and the answers just really weren't satisfactory. So I guess in summary, what I would ask is that staff, and I had a little bit of a conversation about this with the city clerk, is to explore what, you know, what other cities in the county are experiencing and what their perceptions are of the system, at least see whether or not we're all by ourselves on this or whether it's something that we're all experiencing. At minimum, I would want to have, you know, what we observed and our concerns once again expressed to the county clerk. I don't know if we need to bump it up and go to the Secretary of State to find out why it is we cannot get returns any quicker than 3:00 AM or 6:00 AM, which is, you know, I mean, Sacramento, you look across the river, they're much bigger, much larger, just as many issues, and their returns were available, I think, by 10 o'clock. So I just can't -- I can't really explain it any better than that, and I don't know if the city clerk wants to chime in. I don't want to put her on the spot, but what I observed was just extremely frustrating and difficult. So I would just pose that to the city manager to see what we have. I mean, I don't know how realistic it is to actually have the work done here and to manage our own elections results. I don't know if that's realistic. I know it's very expensive and difficult, but I don't know at what point we say enough is enough. So I would offer that as my summary of what I observed.
You know, I would throw something out there that I think that may help, and that is during the next election cycle, I think we ought to videotape it. Go into the elections office and videotape it so that we have a document, so that we have something that the Secretary of State truly understands, because it is very frustrating. I know last night at 1:00 in the morning, trying to find some election results, and 1% of the vote. It's ludicrous. It's -- there's some -- the system's broken, or there's something that's wrong, so. And then I'm too old to stay up until 2:00.
I was up later, but I -- even I tried going to bed at 3:00, and there still was only the one precinct that had reported even at 3:00 in the morning. All right. Thank you for doing that, Mr. Viegas. I can't imagine how annoyingly, maddeningly frustrating that must have been, but it needs to be documented and seen. So we've been given a lot of excuses over a lot of years to have firsthand evidence of exactly what works and what doesn't work. It's going to be important to finding a solution, so thank you. The Delta Protection Commission met the end of last week in Ileton, and the main topical topic that would be -- is relevant for us is the legislature in the big water package had directed the commission to examine the primary zone and the secondary zone, and specifically to look at including some additional areas into the primary zone. So the commission was charged with examining the primary and secondary zones and then look at a list of things, including but not limited to adding these other places in. And the other places are some area around Thornton in Sacramento County, the area around Ileton, some farmland around Lethrip in San Joaquin County, and then Bethel Island in Contra Costa County. So the law requires that those areas be looked at, but the intention was that we -- that this be a look at the whole issue of the primary zone, secondary zone mapping that we've been talking about for quite some time. The Subcommittee of the Delta Protection Commission that's been working on this and our new executive director, Mike Machado, have very narrowly cast that study, so it's only been about those areas and whether or not they should be placed in the primary zone. So we had the draft of the recommendations came forward at that meeting, and Supervisor McGowan and I threw a temper tantrum about the just abject failure to look at the whole issue of the secondary zone and particularly the clear misplacement of West Sacramento and parts of downtown Stockton in the same category as, you know, areas that are right adjacent to the delta smelt, that is, that we need something different. And they didn't -- they didn't look at that issue, said, "Let's look at the primary zone first, and then we'll come back and look at the secondary zone." Well, that doesn't work, because if you go to the legislature and say, "Okay, we want to add these areas into the primary zone," then you come back later, a year later, two years later, and say, "Now we want to take some areas out of the secondary zone," there's no -- I mean, there's no negotiation to be had. You have to go in at the same time and say, "Okay, we want to take West Sacramento out, in exchange, we're going to put Ileton in," right? There has to be that sort of balancing of the issue in the legislature, so we -- so we're not willing to do that. So in December, they're going to come back and work off a proposal that I made to -- that I've mentioned to the council before, which is to create essentially four zones, a primary zone, a primary zone light that applies to what we call the legacy towns, Clarksburg, Walnut Grove, Hood, Ileton, the towns of the delta, which, as you know, have been a challenge to manage those areas in exactly the same way as managing shallow water smelt habitat, which is the same -- they have the same designation in the current regime. So split the primary zone into a primary zone regular and a primary zone legacy town, and then split the secondary zone into a secondary zone regular and a secondary zone urban, or some other sort of classification that would apply just to us and to that part of downtown Stockton that's in the current secondary zone, where we would be in the legal delta for, you know, for legacy purposes and for signage purposes and maybe for levy qualification purposes, but we would not be in the delta for coverage of -- the regulatory coverage of the Delta Commission or the covered action language of the Delta Stewardship Council. So that's the framework that we're going to be pressing at the December meeting of the commission. I didn't hear a lot of pushback against the concept at the commission, other than from Mr. Machado, who I think is just concerned that we're biting off more than the little -- this little commission can handle, but it's still a critical issue. We haven't had to deal with it yet because the Stewardship Council hasn't, you know, hasn't started to bear its teeth, but it's definitely an important one, so we'll keep the council updated. But the next key point is going to be on December. That meeting's going to be right here -- it's actually going to be across the street. The meeting of the next meeting of the Delta Protection Commission's going to be at the community center. So they'll be able to see exactly what I'm talking about when I tell them that it's not really good freshwater delta smelt habitat in the black box theater, but we'll see. And then tomorrow, the Seco Board is meeting, and we're going to be -- I'm not sure if any members of the council made it to the Metropolitan Transportation Workshop for Yolo County. There weren't a lot of West Sacramento residents there, but we'll be hearing the results of that and proceeding to the next step on the MTP. We're going to be, I think, putting the nail in the coffin on the -- of the idea of a high occupancy toll lane on Highway 80, on Interstate 80 between I-5 and Placer County. We just had a study come back on that that shows that it's doesn't -- it just doesn't work economically. People wouldn't be willing to pay enough to make it work, so that's likely to get dropped. Okay. Item 1, these appointments to boards and commissions have won, and that's -- we have a -- the city has a seat on the Yolo County Waste Advisory Committee, which has been filled -- it's filled by a staff member from the city. Denise Kotko has been our representative since 1991, but since she's retired, the city manager is requesting that we replace her with Paulina Rosenthal, who's the senior analyst in refuse and recycling on that committee. So I'm appointing Paulina to that committee and asking for a motion to approve the appointment.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Beers and seconded by Mr. Kristoff, saying no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, hearing none. That motion carries. The -- just on commissions generally, the applications and notice are all on the website. It is that time of the season for all of the seats on the city's boards and commissions, which provide an important opportunity for citizens to help guide and shape policy in the city. All of those are vacant, become vacant with this -- in this next term, and so we're requesting that applications be turned in by November 30. They're always accepted on a rolling basis, but to be considered for this -- for the principal round of appointments, we're asking that all applications be in by November 30 to the city clerk. At that point, we'll then provide the application to the council and pursuant to the procedures that we've set up in the past around council nominations that we'll make in those appointments. I believe we make them in the beginning of January. All right, have all that right, Madam Clerk? Okay, very good. That brings us to -- we've conducted item 2, the presentation of the Employee Service Awards Ceremony prior to this meeting, so item 3 is a presentation, an update on Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District's tentative wastewater discharge permit. Mr. Dean, welcome.
Thank you for inviting me here. My name is Stan Dean, and I'm the district engineer for the Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District. I'm going to spend a short amount of time going through a PowerPoint presentation. This is mostly background information, and it, by no stretch of the imagination, does get into all the details of everything that's happening here. So I am hoping to get through this fairly quickly and then entertain any questions you have, because that -- those can also generate a lot of valuable information.
Mr. Dean, there's a button to your right. If you want to raise the entire podium, it'll get the microphone closer to your mouth, and folks at home can hear it a little easier.
Thank you, much more comfortable.
I'm not sure -- is there a green light? Is it on at the bottom there? That'll tell whether or not the microphone is on.
Yes, it is. All right, very good. Okay, so we'll get started here. Just basically some background information. The plant that we're talking about came online almost 30 years ago. It replaced 22 smaller plants in the Sacramento metropolitan area. The plant is located south of the city of Sacramento, north of Elk Grove, and it does discharge into the Sacramento River at the location of Freeport. That bridge that crosses at Freeport there, our diffuser is in the river right below that point, and it's actually sitting at the bottom of the river and jets the wastewater out in and mixes it within the Sacramento River. I'm going to skip a lot of the background so we can get right to the meat of it. I do want to point out our service area. For those who may not be familiar with the Regional Sanitation District, we serve about 1.3 million customers. If you draw a triangle from Folsom to West Sacramento to Elk Grove and imagine all the urbanized area in between, that's pretty much our service area, although we actually pick up the towns of Walnut Grove and Cortland, and wastewater from those communities is pumped back to our treatment plant also. So we do reach all the way down into the delta itself for some of our service. And that simply is a map again about what I've been talking about, what our service area is. Okay, here's where we're getting into the permit. The treatment plant is regulated under the Clean Water Act, and it is regulated under the Porter Cologne Water Quality Control Act at the state. The state actually issues the permit on behalf of both the feds and the state. The permit is normally issued in five-year cycles. The last one was issued in the year 2000, but it remains in effect until the next permit is issued, and that's a point of -- that often gets miscommunicated. Some folks will say, "You're operating without a permit," and that's simply not true. That permit is in effect until we get a new one. Okay, the permit came out on September 3, and we had until October 8, a very short comment period, to enter our comments on -- to read it, get our comments into the written record along with everybody else. When we look at the permit, it leads to what we see as the need for four major new treatment processes. The first is nitrification, which is essentially removing ammonia from the wastewater. A lot of attention has been given to ammonia. To remove all of it, we see a cost of about $582 million. Remember, ammonia is a nutrient. It's a fertilizer. You put it on your garden, it makes your plants grow. It is -- it's an important part of the ecosystem. In the right amounts, it's absolutely essential; in the wrong amounts, it can cause detrimental effects. Our position that we have told the regional board is that we should be removing about half of the ammonia, and this is not because of any past conditions. We don't believe that it has had a significant impact on the overall health of the delta in the past, but as we look forward to the future and reserving some capacity so that we can continue to grow in this region, we think removing about half of it is a prudent thing to be doing. The rest of this, we think the state of the science and the benefits to the environment don't come anywhere close to balancing with the extent of the costs that we would incur. The next -- the next step is once you take the ammonia out, it actually turns into a different form of inorganic nitrogen called nitrate, and the permit requires us to remove that, too. That adds another $200 million to the project. The big ticket item is moving to filtration, which is a new step. That filtration is over $1 billion if we're going to build a microfiltration plant. We feel like microfiltration is -- would be the appropriate technology to take us into the future. If we're going to have to build something, we should be going with microfiltration if we have to go there. UV disinfection, changing from our current practice of using chlorine to going to ultraviolet light, adds an extra $116 million. And I'll point out an interesting fact about UV disinfection. It is very energy intensive. Right now, the sanitation district's electric bill is about $10 million a year, just what we pay to smudge. If we have to put all these processes in, we almost double our energy bill, and I think that's just important to point out, that we have -- we're not really looking at cross-media impacts, water versus air and carbon emissions. That's something that this permit doesn't take into account when it's written, and I think it's -- it is an important societal question. All adds up to about $2 billion. Our concern is that we are moving to advanced treatment without sufficient compelling science to justify us going there. The regional board is responsible for balancing cost and benefits to the environment. We don't believe they have done an adequate job of doing that. We don't believe this makes -- passes the test. And I've talked about the rest of those largely. Okay, here's really what this means, that $2 billion I was talking about. Once you finish building something, you actually have to operate it. So to operate it is an additional $77 million a year. Right now, the entire operating budget for a regional sand district is about $90 million, so you take $90 million, add $77 million on top of that. The current wastewater rates, if you pay a regional sand bill, you're paying $20 a month. That does not include any local collection system charges that you're paying. Within our service area, there's a number of local providers, and their individual rates vary. Some of them are getting up around $20 a month also. That $20, if you have to pay for this project, can get up into the $50, even $60-plus range to pay for this project. The folks who build new homes, new businesses, they have to pay one-time connection fees when they come into the service area or impact fees. If you're in a new growth area, right now, you pay about $7,500 per home to connect. It's a one-time fee. We could see those numbers get up over $30,000 for a home. That is devastating to business. It's devastating to economic development in the region. It's a huge hit. Now, I will say that these numbers that I've got here are one scenario about how you take the whole pie of costs and divide it up between new and infill and rate payers and future growth. We will be embarking on a rate and fee study over the next nine months, which is going to look at a whole range of alternatives of how those costs actually shake out. But the important point here is existing users But the important point here is existing users and future people coming into the service area, the costs, the bottom-line costs are high, and the whole pie eventually has to be paid for. We heard earlier that our costs are getting challenged. This is one of the latest efforts by some of our adversaries to try to discredit the work we're doing. We are, we are being told that that $2 billion is, it doesn't really cost that much. And my response is, we've had very reputable consultants who have come in and looked at what we need, who are familiar with our plant, who are familiar with the construction standards, the technology, and what it'll take to build a facility that can actually work and operate for the long term. And I believe that $2 billion is a very appropriate number to be planning on at this time. Any attempts to come in and say, "It's not really $2 billion, it's only 1.3 billion." So Sacramento region, it's only 1.3 billion, you should just take it, get on with it, and build it and go away. I don't think that's fair to the community. I think that we do not want to underestimate what this really could cost, because that, that in the long run, will hurt our decision-making and it'll eventually come back and have to be paid for by us. Using the assumptions I've got up there, this is what some of the impact fees would translate to, for a couple example, new business coming into the service area. For a restaurant, for example, if they had to pay $15,000 today, it's possible you could see that going up to $70,000 in the future. That would definitely affect which businesses come into the service area. Okay, written comments were due on October 8th. That's the close of the written record. Submitting comments right now, they will get excluded, the regional board will not consider them. However, there is public testimony that right now is scheduled for December 8th, 9th, or 10th. The exact date and time have not yet been announced. When that hearing occurs, it is important for concerned folks in the region to get down and make their, make their voices heard. Tell the regional board that, yes, I am concerned about this permit because, I'm not sure of the science, because it is too expensive. Sacramento just can't afford this right now. We had a lot of letters that were submitted in, from the region, supporting our position. We had some state legislators. Unfortunately, the slide presentation was put to get, put in before we tallied up all exactly who submitted letters. So from our state and federal elected officials, we actually had letters of concern from Joan Buchanan, Ted Gaines, Allison Huber, Dan Lundgren, Doris Matsui, Roger Nilo, Darrell Steinberg, and Mariko Yamada. So we had good support getting the record in from our local, state, and federal electeds. And as you can see from our business, business associates in the, in the area, Chamber of Commerce, Taxpayers League, Building Industry Association, all weighed in heavily. I'm not going to go through all of these, but to give you an idea of the types of people who are weighing in on this permit. Okay, what the community can do, I think it's very important that every member who pays a wastewater bill in this community understands the situation. So, talking to your neighbors, talking to your friends, getting the word out that this is happening is essential, because if we have to deal with this down the road, we need to make sure everybody is aware. We are going to continue extensive outreach on this, but it's incumbent on all of us to do the same thing. Use the media to spread the word. If you have local newsletters that you can write stuff in, get them in. Use those forums to get the word out about what's happening. If you have access to our state and federal representatives, it's important to let them know that you're concerned about this. I'd also like to point you to a website, SacDeltaSolutions.com. We are communicating with the public heavily on this. You can also go on there and sign up for Twitter and Facebook. And we keep posted comment letters and position papers and, and other information that we put out. It's a very good site to keep abreast of what we're, what we're doing. And of course, when the hearing comes around and you know the date and time, help us by getting down there and making the voice heard. I have passed out to you some more information. I'm not going to go through all the handouts, that's basically for your reading. And at this point, I think I would just like to take questions and, and see what this, see what this brings to mind in folks.
Mayor Porteviagius, you're a representative on the board, you want to lead it off?
Just, thank you very much, Mr. Dean, for, for presenting. I know you've actually made your rounds. This is, I think, the last stop on your tour of all the cities that are part of the district, and so everybody's sort of up to speed now with what latest and greatest information is that you have. And so I appreciate you coming out. Hopefully, there's some questions that will shed more light on kind of where we're headed. I know that, and actually, for those who may not know, Mr. Dean's been in the position now about five, five months?
Since June.
Since June, so he's done a wonderful job managing the district at a very difficult period. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Kristof?
No, I too would just echo those comments. I'd like to thank, thank you for highlighting this, and hopefully, there's people on our television world here in West Sacramento that, that see your presentation and understand the, the dynamic that you're, you're really talking about. I mean, it is, it could be, it could be damaging to any of our communities if these permits cost the kind of money that, that you had articulated tonight. I mean, and, you know, if you, I guess it's the cynical part of me in, in some respects, because basically what this is, is, in my opinion, it's, it's a north-south issue. It's the down-use water people that take delta waters and have to treat it and do whatever they need to do. They just want a cleaner water. And, you know, and, and so they're forcing us to make that water cleaner when it's really water that is, we've done it for years and years and years, and the science does not prove that drastic steps need to be taken. And it's just way too expensive. So, I just hope that the folks in our television land understand that, and they can either make comments or do some of the things that you suggested, so that, so that everybody really understands all this.
I think when, in response to that, this is a lot about the delta, and a lot about concern over the delta. And I use the word concern because we really don't have a, a complete understanding of what's happening in that ecosystem, yet to take these costs on a, maybe, maybe it might do something beneficial stance, we're not there yet. I don't think the region should have to bear that for a, maybe this might do something.
Mr. Beers?
Thank you also for coming. I, I'm thinking back to an earlier time when, when we tried to go up against the water board ourselves, and they handed us our hat. And we always thought that by being part of a large organization, we wouldn't get treated this way, but apparently, that doesn't apply. But, all the things that you said are important. What, what I think needs to be added to that, though, is, is the rest of the conversation. I mean, clearly, the delta's important. Clearly, clean water's important. And you inferred in your discussion that prospectively, we need to change and improve our treatment regardless. And, and, so my point would be, to send out thousands of letters of concern, to me, is, is one approach, but we actually, I think, need to be viewed as responsible in terms of, what is it that should be done? Where are we negotiating? What is, what is it, just to broadcast that it's going to cost $2 billion, the sky is falling, is, is not going to be received intellectually anyway, in a positive way. What is our view of what the real changes need to be? Are we being held to a different standard than anyone else? Have other permits been applied with some of these same qualifications? The federal government is actually still in charge of this whole process, and, and the state is, is managing it. So where do we stand in terms of meeting federal clean water standards? You can't do that, I know, in this small conversation, but I think that we need to project what the real world is, because from what I've seen or what, what I'm hearing, there's going to be increased costs that we need to allow for anyway. I don't know what that number is. You were saying something to the effect that maybe we have to take half of the ammonia out anyway.
Right.
And that we should be moving to microfiltration anyway. And so, the, the notion that I think we need to be really responsible is, is that we, we view where we need to be on this trajectory as being responsible, and, and we need a plan to get there. And it's going to involve money, and it's going to hit the rates, as opposed to just simply saying, "Bad science, costs too much, we don't want to play." And, and I, I don't want to simplify it, because I'm sure that you're not in that place, but I don't want to agree that that's what we should tell our constituents, that you need to, you know, run around because your bill's going to go up. We need to tell our constituents as close to the truth as, as we can in terms of what is the real impact of these decisions, and, and that's the part I'm missing.
The, when I, when I try to look back at all of the science and the state of the regulations and trying to figure out, are we meeting federal and state mandates, and what do we need to do, I really come to the conclusion that removing about half the ammonia is the prudent thing to do. The rest of that, moving beyond that, is not required under the Clean Water Act under Porter Cologne. That is largely being driven because the regional board is exercising, for lack of a better term, best professional judgment in saying, because of all the concerns and because of all the unknowns, we want to push you to this higher level of treatment and move you from, you know, less than half a billion up to $2 billion. Now, if we try to put that in terms of reality, is that likely going to happen? Actually, I think there's a very, no matter what this community does, I think there's a fairly high chance that we're going to get a very strict permit coming out of it. And so, in terms of what our future holds and stores, we need to be thinking pragmatically in that this may happen. Now, once that happens, then we also have to be looking at, where can we mitigate what happens to the Sacramento region? Where can we get other sources of funding to possibly help out? If this problem is bigger than just us, maybe the other people who share in that problem ought to be sharing in some of the costs. And those are the opportunities that we need to be looking for simultaneously.
And, and I'm just, and I'm not presupposing that you're not doing that, but I just believe that we have a responsibility to give a, a, a better explanation to the constituency than, than one that's based solely on fear. And, and I, I think we need to, and maybe it's in your website, I haven't looked it up, but we need to say, what does, what are the requirements that currently exist? Where are these requirements departing from that? What do we propose to do? And what can people in our community and throughout this district support in terms of doing it? Because we have, we have to face the fact that some of these requirements that we've been doing need to change. They need, you know, there is reason to remove half the ammonia or whatever. And so we need to be more thorough and explain where we're going, because it's the right thing to do, to me, for me. So, and it makes, to me, it makes our, our response stronger.
To the, to the extent that we can, I, you know, we want to make all of our information open. Our, our comment letter and our position on this, and why, why we think the science tells the story we're telling, is in, you know, hundreds of pages of, of written record there. So we do have a challenge in front of us of how do we take something that's so technically complex and boil it down to something as simple as what I've presented here, somewhere in that range, to tailor what a wide variety of people need to, to get comfortable with it. And I, and I will say, we do provide more information on the website out there that people can go and look at. And if people want to dive into the technical rationale, we're certainly willing to help provide information and sit down with folks and get them to the place that they need to be.
Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we've been basically going off without a permit since 2005, it looks like, and is there a requirement that we have a permit? At some, I mean, the, can, how long can this extension really reasonably go on?
The, the permit is in effect until we get a new one. And if the regional board doesn't get around to that for a long time, this one still stands. There is no timeline, although the regional board is required under the Clean Water Act to reissue the permits on five-year cycles. The fact that they didn't is not our responsibility or our, our problem, that is the, that is their problem.
Right, and it doesn't seem, from what you were saying, there doesn't seem to be an environmental emergency at this point, or even some identifiable impact right now. I mean, there's quite, I mean, there's certain areas where there's significant difference of opinion of whether or not it's even there or not. And I guess, my point is that, you know, we, we just got through a national election on jobs and the economy, and I just don't see where there's going to be a lot of appetite to start, to start this kind of thing, because everybody's concerned about, you know, getting business going, to, to get development going, and getting people, having jobs, and to do something like this at this time when there's no identifiable emergency, it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense.
Well, I would, I would qualify the identifiable, identifiable emergency. I'm saying that wastewater treatment is not causing the decline of the delta ecosystem, so that we're not, it's not an emergency to fix what we're doing. But I will say that there, it's pretty self-evident that the delta ecosystem is collapsing, and something needs to be done down there. One of the things that I'm aware of that the Delta Stewardship Council is going to be doing in the future, which I commend them on, is they are going to be trying to look at all the different stressors on the delta and put them in priority order. What are the most important stressors and rank them? And really, if you're going to do this right, you need to rank what are the stressors, you need to look at what are all the options that can remove each of those stressors, how much do they cost, and translate that into a cost-benefit analysis in terms of where does the state really spend their funds? Unfortunately, we're not near it yet. We don't even know what the, we can't even agree on what the relative ranking of all the stressors is in the delta, so we're a long way from figuring out what's the wise thing to do with the state's money.
All right, well, I mean, we, folks have asked about this effect in the community and whether joining Regional Sand was the right option for us as a result in the prospect of the kinds of rate increases and fee increases that you described. I would point out that had we not been a member of Regional Sanitation of the regional district and had to rebuild our own plant and expand our own plant, which was, I think, preliminarily cited to be in Southport, not too far from where the nugget is today, that we would have been required to meet requirements very similar to this, but without the economies of scale that the regional district has, and we would have been paying this scale of fees and monthly rates for the last decade. So it's, I mean, that, that choice was, is, was still an obviously good one, because Regional Sand has insulated us, because it had, it had better treatment options at, at the scale that it has had. So I, I understand the frustrations with the regional board. I was an appointee of Governor Davis and then Governor Schwarzenegger on the regional board. My seat has yet to be filled, two years after I left it, because no other sane city council member in the entire Central Valley, from the crest of the Tehachapi's to Oregon, is willing to serve on it. And it's, and I appreciate what you're doing. I think this, you know, the strategy, the advocacy strategy is, is an admirable one. It's, the regional board organization doesn't, doesn't really see itself as having a wide amount of discretion in these matters. And so, efforts, you know, I, I recall quite frequently getting letters from assembly members and senators complaining about permit requirements, who would then go back and vote for laws that would require you to, in every case, pick the most, the most stringent possible permit conditions that you can have. This was, this whole structure was created to allow them that hypocrisy, to pass the Clean Water Act and every detail in it, and then to be able to say, "But no, 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 the actual villain here is this obscure state board that includes a farmer and a fisherman and three other people who, who are supposed to know all this stuff about the science of ammonia." ammonia." And so there's just, the board exercises a fairly narrow range of discretion, and the Regional Sanitation District and virtually all the other dischargers stayed silent when the other major discharges into the rivers were being taken up. Basically had a no aggression policy on ag discharges, that is runoff of ag waste or on dairy waste or everything else. Said, "Oh, no, we don't, that's not our, we don't want to offend anybody, so we're not going to weigh in on those issues." And today, all those folks have been protected. And now the only ones left are the people, are us, municipal dischargers. So a very bad tactical choice from the very beginning to sort of act as though we would all just not scratch each other's back and not get in each other's way. Because we're now left with it and the prevailing ethic is that cities and sanitation districts have unlimited amounts of money, whereas farmers and dairy operators are just barely making it. And it's not true. They are just barely making it, but so are cities and sanitation districts. So we're partly living the legacy of that process, but it is the case, I think Mr. Beers is correct, that we, the focus, as much as anywhere, has to be on the federal government because that regional board is largely a front for the EPA. And every decision that we ever made, we had to take in the context of, will this lead the EPA to withdraw their delegation of authority for us to issue the federal MPDS permits? That was, that's the big test every single time. Not, is this the right permit?
Right.
Not, does this cost too much? But if we issue this permit, will it result in EPA revoking our authority to do this permitting in the first place? And so the regional board's discretion has largely been exercised in, well, okay, we know this is horrible, but we will give you 18 months instead of 12 months to do it. Right? So it's all been about timeframe as opposed to content. So I get it. And in this case, the, you know, the question really is how much beyond the MPDS law is the regional board going? But it's also trying to deal with all of its other TMDL responsibilities and stuff that get layered in because we've taken ag, ag discharges largely off the table. Because we're getting hit on the other side, too, the stormwater, our stormwater folks are here, too. We're in the same position on that, on that side of the equation as well. So I think the strategy's right, and we're definitely for it here in West Sacramento, but we do need to focus some attention on the federal government, which is where this really lies. Because even if you convince the regional board, this will get appealed to the state board. And the state board has not been any friendlier on this issue than, it's been, been less friendly than the regional board has. So it's, that's not going to be, that will not be the end of the road. It's not going to be, even if it's the right outcome, it's not going to, not likely to be succinct. We've got to focus on changing the way that EPA interprets this and potentially changing the weeds inside the Clean Water Act.
Very, very good points. I agree with you, I agree with you totally on those. Thank you. I would like to add one other comment that I was, came up in my mind as I was listening to you, in that the fact that the regional board on this one is taking such a leap from what they have to do under the Clean Water Act and exercising their judgment to go beyond the minimum requirements on all of this, that's a huge precedent, and it's a precedent that affects the entire state. And like you said earlier, the wastewater organizations in this state traditionally have not been aggressive. And if this permit goes through, it is setting a precedent, it's setting a new minimum standard of technology that I think has a ripple effect all the way down to Los Angeles and San Diego and what they eventually have to do. So this is not just about Sacramento, this is really about what is wastewater going to be doing throughout the state in the future.
Well, I hope it has that ripple effect, actually, because, I mean, one of the great inequities in California wastewater policy is it's all locally financed, so depending on where you are. So if you're in Orange County and you want to discharge secondary treated sewage into the ocean, that's perfectly okay, but just by the happenstance that we live here and somebody decides they want to pick up our water after we discharge it, we have to go to tertiary.
Yep.
If that's the state's policy, the state ought to be picking a much more substantial portion of the tab. And so that, you know, that's sort of the other angle on this issue. In addition to changing the regulatory environment to making it a little bit more sane, is also changing the financing policies so that what are essentially state and federal policies are funded at the state and federal level rather than being devolved to, so that you pay based on the precise accident of where your geography is and who takes your sewage after you're done with it.
Yep. Thank you.
All right, thanks. All right, that brings us to the consent agenda, which is all of item four. Is there any questions, comments on the minutes?
Move consent.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, hearing none. Motion carries. The consent agenda is adopted. Item five is a public hearing and first reading of ordinance 10-14, amending chapter 8.16 of the municipal code to add provisions for the prohibition of smoking at public transportation stops.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. In response to requests from community members, council asks that staff prepare an ordinance to regulate smoking at bus stops. And a presentation was made at the October 6 council meeting to discuss the proposed ordinance 10-14. This would prohibit smoking in and within 20 feet of all public transportation stops within the city. After conducting surveys with other jurisdictions, 20 feet was determined to be the standard and is therefore the proposed distance for this ordinance. During the presentation, council recommended that appropriate signage be posted to clarify and inform the public of the standards of this new ordinance. The department has since been in contact with Public Works to have that recommended signage made. I do want to mention that the city attorney's office has subsequently recommended that for further clarification, the verbiage in both the title and the purpose section of the ordinance be revised to read prohibiting smoking rather than regulating smoking as we originally had, and at public transportation stops to be changed to near public transportation stops. And with that, I'm open to any questions at this time.
Are there questions? Mr. Johansson.
Yeah, just a quick question. Does this, an ordinance like this typically come with a sign requirement as well? Signage for?
I'm going to defer to the city attorney on that. I'm not aware of it.
So people know.
You can do that without it being in the ordinance. We'll be able to post notices that the ordinance has been adopted, and that's all it would take. I mean, you can put it in there if you'd like, but it's not required.
Not necessary, okay. Any other questions at this time? All right, we do have one request to speak on this item. It's by Mr. Lowell. Oh, yes, while he's walking up, we'll open the public hearing so the testimony counts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. William Lowell with Sacramento for the record. And this is one of the issues I feel most strongly about, and I am very much in favor of this regulation because for too many years at the bus stops, I and many others have had to inhale others' secondhand smoke because others, many others have not been as considerate as their counterparts. And I remember, even though my mother passed away at age 65 from being a two-pack-a-day smoker, my sister passed away at age 50 from secondhand smoke. Her longtime live-in boyfriend, he just constantly had the cigarette going and she was riding around in the pickup with him. So her last day, her last year of life, her face was all puffed up, yet she was coming from Stockton or somewhere around that area to pick me up, to take me to be with our folks up north. And it was heartbreaking to see her just gradually pass away. And here I've had so many injuries and I'm a little over 20 years past that stage, and so I somehow or another managed to keep a little better care of myself. But so many times, these sheltered bus stops, you see somebody, you see somebody smoking inside the shelter, and you'll see a young mom with a tiny infant, and you know that infant's having to inhale that secondhand smoke. And that, that makes my blood boil, and so, and every now and then you'll see, we'll be, our bus will be pulled up forward from the sign, and somebody's smoking just outside the bus, and the way the wind blows is causing the cigarette smoke to blow right inside the bus. So I hope you would take that into consideration also. So again, the direction of the wind certainly matters. Thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. Lowell. We have no further requests to speak, so we're going to close the public hearing on this one and return to the council for the discussion or motion. Mr. Beers.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Hearing none. Any opposed, hearing none? Sorry, 3:00 in the morning. Hearing none, motion carries. The item will be, will return for second reading. Item six is a workshop and presentation of the draft West Sacramento Climate Action Plan.
Mr. Mayor, Steve Paytek will present this item.
Who?
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, it's a pleasure to be visiting you here tonight. I'd love to tell you that I've really missed being present at every council meeting for almost 18 years, but that probably wouldn't be entirely truthful. I would like to add my congratulations to Mayor Chris Balden, Councilmember Johannesson, Council-elect LaDesma, and Wes Beers. Welcome back to civilians. We're here tonight to talk about climate action plan, greenhouse gas emissions, the whole area. This is an area that the council has been very much in the lead in, in both 2007 and 2008. The city council identified a green and sustainable strategy as one of its top priority, policy priorities in its work plan. In November of 2008, staff came to the council and got your blessing on what was a general green, green and sustainable strategy, a high-level, fairly general approach, which really called for the city organization being a leader and doing what it could do to reduce its greenhouse gas footprint and using that and encouraging and using its communication to encourage the citizens of West Sacramento and the businesses of West Sacramento to be involved also. In terms of global warming, I won't try to convince you, I think you're all fairly well up to, on this. Most credible scientists believe the debate is over. Eight warmest years in recorded history are in the last 10. We are seeing steady warming, and CO2 concentrations have increased from about 280 pre-industrial to 368, which is probably low, it's probably more than that. Now, cities are, the state has taken a leadership role. The governor issued some executive orders, out of which the Air Resources Board prepared a scoping plan. And cities have been encouraged to get involved with this via air resources. The eternity general, soon-to-be-governor again, Jerry Brown, has encouraged cities to get involved by suing them if they don't address greenhouse gas emissions in general plan, environmental impact reports. The format has been evolving, it's been an area of really shifting science over the last few years, but generally the vehicle or document that's being used by cities now to address their climate change efforts, it's called a climate action plan. Sacramento County has a draft, Davis has an adopted plan, Yellow is preparing one, a number of Sacramento cities are working on them, so pretty much everyone in the area is working on them. Some cities have had climate action plans for three or four years. The draft, West Sacramento Climate Action Plan, is the document that's before you. There are a number of different sections in it. Moving quickly through, there's sort of an introductory section here, a table of contents, a well-written mayor, a letter from the mayor explaining the purpose of the document, some executive summary, and just background, general information. Chapter one, it's kind of the context, the history of legislative issues, science of global warming, impacts of global warming. Certainly, in our case, perhaps the biggest is eventually loss of much of the Sierra Sopac, with resulting in much, probably the same amount of precipitation coming down, but coming down as water and rain and moving most immediately into our river systems without the great storage that we have up in the snowpack. Chapter two is the emissions inventories for both the city organization as well as the community as a whole. We have a municipal target of 15% below the current level, which actually would be the level that was in effect in about 2006. And for the community, 30% below business as usual by 2020. And that I'll discuss in a little more detail later because it is an issue of policy discussion. We've used the International Council on Local Environmental Initiatives, have put out software to help cities do these inventories, organize it. We followed that, and we followed the Sacramento County, which got together, all the cities and the county hired a single consultant to do their inventory, and we followed their methodology quite closely. In terms of emissions for the community, transportation, by far our largest sector, larger than most probably, almost certainly due to the presence of two significant freeways in our borders. Commercial industrial sector that's larger than typical, a higher percentage compared to residential. Usually you see more of an even distribution between those two, and those really constitute the vast majority. Residential and commercial sector, we're talking about electrical and natural gas use Looking at a, just on a per capita basis, West Sacramento doesn't come out that well compared to the rest of the region, but we realize that's because we do have a strong employment base. When I developed a set of emissions that took into account both the population and the employment in each of the cities in the various areas, we actually come out very well. We're one of the lowest per capita, per employee greenhouse gas emissions communities in the region. Business as usual forecast is essentially saying, if we continue to grow in terms of both population and employment, as we expect we will, and each of those persons and each of those jobs generates the same amount of greenhouse gas that we do currently, this is the result. We see really almost a tripling of our greenhouse gas emissions by 2050. Chapter three of this document is really goals and policies, and they are the goals and policies that would, either are, or are proposed to be included in the general plan. They show up in various different chapters in the general plan, so what we've done here to pull them into one document is simply to consolidate them as the chapter three. We have a lot of policies that date back as far as 1990 that really related to transit, pedestrian, bike, encouraging those use air quality, but still are direct relationships with the amount of greenhouse gas emissions. And then new policies have been added consistent with attorney generals put out considerable amount of suggestions on that, also the Office of Planning and Research of the governor's office and the air pollution control offices, officers. And these are the new policies. In the document, you'll see the existing policies are in place, new policy language is underlined, and so those will come forth with the general plan update. Chapter four is kind of the meat of it. It's the measures that have been identified for how we would get to our goals, and it's a description of what is the measure, how does it get implemented, what kind of benefits does it bring to us in terms of emissions, what does it cost to implement them, and what are other kinds of emissions? This is a section we struggled with quite a bit because as the science was evolving, we've moved in the last two years into where you're looking for people to quantify scientifically what the benefits of a specific measure would be, a specific level of achievement. And we received, about maybe seven or eight months ago, we got another piece of software from ICLI, which allowed for calculation of that on a fairly, kind of, United States average basis, but at least with some basis, in fact, other than just trying to make it Main measures to be implemented for the city organization, continuing to purchase low-emission vehicles. We found out that we can actually set the timing and RPMs and limitations and speed limitations on city vehicles within, and program them in so they can't be driven any faster than 55 or revved over 2,500 or whatever, encouraging alternate transportation use by employees. LED streetlights is one which would have some good benefits, but it's an example of one that, for example, right now, on an annual operating basis... one that, for example, right now, on an annual operating basis, it makes sense, it saves money. But at $3,000 a streetlight, we would pay it off in about 32 years. So these are some, we have to look for cost changes in the structure before they begin to make sense. Energy retrofits to buildings. We have a number of buildings like this building, like the community center, the recreation center, they're branded buildings, they're great, they're very highly rated. There's not much we can do to make them better. On the other hand, we have some other business, buildings like South River Road that we really don't want to put a lot of money in, we want to replace them. And so trying to find that sweets what? The police department is a decent building. It needs work. It's going to need a new environmental HVAC system in the near future. That's really where we can kind of focus our efforts. And then a pledge to make new city buildings at least leave silver. We have looked at and it's still possible at some point that a solar installation on this building will make sense. Community, education is really one of the biggest benefits. If we are out there, if we use the city organization, the city ability to communicate to the citizens, to encourage them to use alternate transportation, to get energy audits, to do things like that, this is one of our biggest areas of benefit. A fully-developed streetcar system would have tremendous impacts in terms of reducing the greenhouse gases. The Green Building Ordinance, which you have already put into place, the entire transit-oriented, we looked at the entire riverfront area and developing that as we have envisioned developing that, the greenhouse gas emissions from that type of development, or maybe a third of the development, that we're going to see in the rest of the region, in the suburban areas of the region. Expanded bus transit, energy efficiency loan program, we are a member, we are partners with other agencies in that. We've kind of been thrown a curve by the federal mortgage companies, which have basically said, "We're not going to allow that because we think it gets ahead of our mortgages." So we still have some potential there on the commercial side, and that's, I think, where the focus will be. An energy conservation ordinance can be effective. This is one of the policy areas that I think is where the debate. It means basically we require, for example, before you sell a house, you have to get an energy audit, and you have to make certain improvements to weather stripping, insulation, whatever. Or you go to a business and say, "You need to get an energy audit, and you need to do whatever improvements we think are reasonable." Recommendation here is that something maybe we look at in 2015, that we don't go there right now, this economy, that we try the carrot approach first, and the next major update, we look at if that needs to be accomplished. And certainly, just the implementation of the water meter program will have major benefits. Some of the issues that I see, the 30% below business as usual target is a little bit of a different target. The basic target that's been put out statewide is 15% below 2005 level, which is essentially, on a statewide level basis, gets us back to the 1990 level. Given the amount of development we expected to see in this community and given the importance of that development to reducing greenhouse gas emissions throughout the region because of the type of that development, I'm recommending using a 30% below business as usual target, which was suggested as an alternate target by the Air Pollution Control Officers organization. Discussion of the timing and content of any conservation ordinances. As we were drafting this, we thought we had a pretty good shot at grant funding for the first phase of the streetcar, but we didn't get that, so it is, you know, something we still need to work on. And certainly, in a number of things like LED streetlights, when do they make sense financially? When are they cost-effective or at least close enough that we're willing to make the investment? Another concern I have, quite frankly, is you've lost an awful lot of capacity in this organization in the last three years. The green team, the core 10 people of the green team for the last three years, four of us are now retired, and there's a lot of work to be done by a very few people, and it will be really important for the council to continue to let staff know if this is something that's important to it, because there's going to be an awful lot of pressure for other work. This is the kind of stuff that's so easy to get put behind crises. Overall effectiveness for the community, just some numbers, I won't go through them all, but basically, somewhat to my amazement, when we implemented all of the measures, we got back to the target exactly. This is before the 2020 target. And I will point out one thing there, we don't get there without state mandated reductions, and that is two things primarily. The fuel efficiency standards that have been ordered in California and now upheld by EPA, and the reduction in the amount of natural gas used by PG&E. Essentially, PG&E to get the reduction by their fuel efficiency, or the, is required to go from 40% natural gas generation to 20% natural gas generation. So that's cutting there, everything else they do does not produce greenhouse gas emissions. So it's cutting there essentially per kilowatt hour gas emissions in half. And so a huge, huge factor of how we get there. Chapter five is just a discussion of how do we implement this document? Who does it? What, how does it work? How much is it going to cost? What kind of commitments are needed? What kind of annual updates are, what kind of annual reporting should be included and when should it be updated? And that, if you've read that chapter, it's a little bit in flux because it's kind of written prescriptively, expecting things to happen. It will eventually have to be, we'll have to go back and rewrite it to match what actually did happen. Terms of the schedule for 2010, I went to the various commissions at very early stages of this document when it was really not a draft. It was a shell, it was an outline, it was some just examples of kinds of things that might be in one. And then in a number of cases, I went back at different phases, and in August, July, August, really, the draft was completed as a full document, and we went back to the variety of the commissions, Natural Resources, Planning Commission, Housing Advisory, Economic Development Advisory, and presented this to them, and they did endorse the recommendation that I'm going to show you. And in the future, this document needs to get integrated with the general plan update, and that is something that is really kind of a flux issue. The Climate Action Plan is a separate document, is something that was kind of the way to do things two years ago, a year ago, six months ago, and what we're seeing now is more of a desire to really integrate them tightly with general plan updates. And so what we expect to happen is, obviously, the policies and goals are already directly linked to the general plan, but it may be that this document, that some of this information, background goes into the background report, that a lot of it gets implemented through the environmental document for the general plan, or it gets incorporated in other parts of the general plan. And so I don't know what the final, we may or may not end up with a final document of this. It may, or this may be just something interesting on the shelf if you ever wanted to find out in one place, all the climate action information. Essentially, we felt that having this document out for public review before the general plan coming out for public review would be confusing and have the potential for conflict, so the recommendation was, don't go out with this document yet, integrate it into the general plan update, and then use that public process to get input. So, we'd like to recommend that you direct the draft Climate Action Plan to be incorporated into the general plan update to be reviewed through the general plan and public review process. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right, Mr. Johansson.
Yeah, thank you, Steve. So, we're going to be working on this for the next year or so.
Yes.
So this is really a first stab at, first of all, identifying our baseline, looking at, and then looking at the low-hanging fruit that we're either in the process of doing or that we could do with the cost-benefit incremental benefit of this.
That's correct.
One of the things I'd like to see is to make sure that there's a check-in with the development committee and the business community to be in terms of the cost-benefit. And what I'd actually like to see is maybe a ranking of the measure, chapter four measures on, on, you know, where the, where the costs and benefits start to be a little bit out of line, because obviously, some of these are fairly easy to implement. We're already doing, there's just, it's a, you know, designating parking spots for alternate fuel vehicles, things like that, they're fairly easy to do. But some of these things, and we saw that in the Green Building Ordinance discussion we had, that there's certain things that you get that last 5% of benefit, it adds 50% to the cost to whatever you're trying to do. So, I mean, I'd like to see something that's fairly easy to understand, and that you could probably glean in and out of this information you have here. The other thing is, we've talked in the past about neighborhood electric vehicles, and I don't really see that mentioned in here, but when you're looking at updating the bikes' master plan in 2011, I think is the deadline for that, or at least projected deadline, to look at NEVs as possible, alternate type of vehicle in conjunction with the bike lanes. I know the city of Lincoln and some other cities are doing that, and that could work in certain areas, particularly the more denser suburbs that we have in the Southport area, you know, employee NEV program, something like that. So you can actually utilize a bike path for things other than, or have multi-use bike paths. I think it's just you basically develop out a Class 1 bike path and they're capable of carrying NEVs.
Yeah, actually, in fact, the bike lanes on Jefferson are wide enough, if necessary, that you could actually operate an NEV in them. And in most cases where we've had the chance to build new arterials, we've done that.
Yeah.
I knew we'd say that.
Is that why we brought all that right away?
Yeah.
Well, a lot of that, too, is to make sure that, you know, there's certain streets, the same thing with our bike paths right now, they, they kind of stop, and there's danger sections, and there's a lack of consistency, and we're working on that. But if you have an NEV system to work that into where the traffic's going to be coming from, is it going to be local at the store and back, and that kind of thing. So that's, you know, in general, I'm going to be looking, you know, I think it's good for us to be moving in this direction, but we also have to be realistic in the economy and what we're trying to do here in terms of bringing the jobs back and things of that nature. So I need to have some tools to look at in terms of, as we're going forward and trying to implement some of these measures, really, what does that mean in terms of the cost-benefit analysis?
I will mention that I did work with the chamber. I went to governmental affairs fairly early, public affairs, and they appointed me a subcommittee of two members who have been reviewing the drafts as they have developed.
Is that in the process right now?
They've reviewed all the drafts and commented on them, yes.
Okay, good, good.
Mr. Kristoff.
Yeah, Steve, just, hi, Steve.
Hi.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Hey, you say the planning commission hasn't heard this yet.
No, the planning commission actually has heard this three times in different states of completeness, including this exact draft two months ago.
Okay.
They did recommend that you integrate.
Right, into the general plan.
Yes.
So if the, the planning commission still will be active and they will still be engaging as the general plan is implemented, and these concepts will be taken into consideration at that time, too, by the planning commission?
Yes, essentially, you can, this is a starting point.
Okay.
This is a starting point. We've not been through hearings, it's not been out a lot in public. This is just a good starting point that will be used through the general plan review process. So this will be input into the general plan, first phase, that then goes into the public review process.
All right, thank you.
This is a great, it's a great start to the work that has to get done, and given what we had identified, what I think we had in our heads for what a climate action plan might look like when we first talked about this at council in the strategic planning process and when ICLI first came forward, I certainly thought we were going to be preparing, you know, a nine-page document, and this is much, obviously, much more, it's fully comprehensive, and it's impressive both in its iteration of what we're already doing and the policies that we've already put in place, but also in terms of very sort of no-nonsense things that we can be doing.
This is, believe it or not, a very stealth.
Yeah, I can tell.
Climate action plan now, they're coming out like this.
And, you know, it's, this, I mean, we started, we launched this effort because of our own commitment to sustainability and our concern about the planet, for sure. We had the map of the snowpack at the time and the impact on our levees and our water supply. But, you know, the passage of AB 32, the rejection yesterday by the voters statewide, and also here quite heavily, I think, two to one voters rejected Prop 23 that would pull back AB 32. There, I mean, the framework that's in place, the policy framework and the regulatory framework is going to drive, drives these outcomes as well. So it's not about whether or not to do this, it's whether this is the right, you know,
Mix.
This is right, 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 whether or not it's the right mix. And so that framework's not going to get pulled, is not being pulled back, but all the elections yesterday pointed in that direction. So we've got to come up with the right, most efficient strategy that's going to get us to the reductions, the targets, and apparently, this one magically hits that 160,000 metric tons target or whatever that number was. So I think that's, it's definitely a good start in getting it into the general plan. I agree is the right way. I think this is, it was, it was better that we did this first, and it may not be stated, the state-of-the-art concept anymore, but doing this the first time, putting it all together and seeing how the pieces relate to each other, and for us and for members of the public and the commissions to see the relationship between wastewater treatment strategies and energy usage and that sort of thing, I think is very helpful on a going-forward basis. It ought to be fully integrated into the general plan. So I think the process and the timeframe that you've outlined makes a whole lot of sense. The strategies are great. You have car sharing in here, which I think is a great, is, you know, is a promising alternative. Wouldn't have a bike sharing, or at least not that I saw in here, is there a bike sharing? You know, sort of like Paris, Montreal, DC, other American cities are doing?
No, I mean, I'm not, it's not in there, and I don't recall seeing anything that really came up with a quantification of what the benefits of that might be.
All right, could you, could we, could you check?
Certainly, I might add that this is my gift to you, and.
Oh, you're done? Okay. Charlie, could you check?
Charlie Hamilton.
Yes, okay.
Paul Durksen will be picking up the.
I mean, the, the big U. Because somebody other than me checked the, you know, explore, just explore whether or not, because there are increasing numbers of American cities that are doing this. I mean, it's, we call it bike sharing, but people, you know, pay for it and whatever. It's about having lots of public places, and it wouldn't, probably wouldn't make sense just for us to do that alone, but as part of the urban core as, as an additional option for what's, for what's described in these measures, which is a great, is definitely a great list. Mr. Beers?
Yeah, I just couldn't help but, I know the reason you're so passionate about this is because of your scheme, and you want to try.
You can't let this snowpack get away, huh?
Exactly, yeah. That's, that's why it's a gift to us.
All right, then, if this is, you have sufficient direction, or do you need, you don't need a motion to direct the comments, I mean, to incorporate the comments?
If you're comfortable with the recommendation to be integrated with the general plan, that's sufficient.
Okay, all right, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item seven is consideration of presentation and discussion of ordinance 10-15, adopting by reference the 2010 California Fire Code with certain amendments thereto in repealing and enacting Chapter 15.14 of the City of West Sacramento Municipal Code. Farm Marshal.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm here tonight to present for, for presentation and discussion ordinance 10-15, which does, as you say, enact the 2010 California Fire Code. As part of its periodic review, the building, the California Building Standard Commission, every three years publishes a new code with amendments that are taken up over a three-year period, debated at hearings, and set forth for adoption by the state fire marshal. In 2007, the council adopted the 2007 California Fire Code with local amendments that took into account local conditions, be they climatic, topographical, or geographic features for the necessity of fire protection. With that, we have developed an ordinance which keeps the majority of the amendments in the 2007 ordinance intact with limited changes. I would say the large change this year by the state fire marshal's office was the adoption of residential sprinklers in all new, single-family and townhome-type construction. So that is not a local amended policy, but is a statewide policy. The California Residential Code did specifically exempt existing homes that were, if they were to add additions or alterations. So if you have an existing home, you're not required to sprinkler that residence, but if a new home is constructed after January 1, 2011, that home will be sprinkled in the state. With that, I'm happy to discuss any of the amendments we'd offered up or itemized in the staff report, or address any other questions you may have as they pertain to the ordinance.
Questions for the farm marshal?
Mr. Kristoff. Jason, we've always had a lot of issues with patio covers and all of that kind of stuff. And as I. And as I read through this, what does this, what does it say? What does it do?
Basically, the first thing we did with the ordinance was define what exactly is a patio cover. That definition is specifically taken from appendix I of the California Building Code. So the definition is what is in the building code. What we've said is if you have a patio cover, this will not be counted as square footage when in fact you are doing an addition or something like that in terms of sprinklers. Now, basically, we do have a portion of our residential ordinance that if you have a single-family home in what we consider a rural area, and that's defined by inadequate water supply and over a five-minute response time, that patio cover, if you were to add it, would not count up to that 2,500 square feet. Why we wanted to define that is we didn't want a patio cover to be a patio one year and then it developed walls and, you know, a structure and whatnot. So then we would be in a position where we would have a building that is outside the parameters we've set, which where residential sprinklers would be required due to no water supply or greater than a five-minute response time.
Okay, so can a patio cover be attached to the house?
Yes.
It just can't have the walls, right?
Yes, and if you go to page five of the ordinance, exception one specifically states that patio covers connected to single-family dwellings shall not be counted when determining total floor area for that purpose.
Okay, thank you.
Are there questions at this time? All right, we do have one request for public comment on this item by Mr. Lowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, William Lowell, West Sacramento, for the record. One of my concerns is, I know that, I know this goes back several decades, but it seems to me like we could correct it with a very small amount of money and save much, much damage and many lives. But maybe the new ones have this code, but there's too many, at least of the old-fashioned duplexes and multiple housing units that have a common attic. And you have these people who smoke or whatever, whatever they're inclined to do, more inclined to cause fires. Well, if, if they had separate attics, it seems like if a fire did break out, the fire would more likely be confined to that unit rather than spreading through, through the attic to the other units. And so I think we should work on eliminating common attics and snuff out those fires. And for what it's worth, let's see, back before we became a city, right after Prop 13, I did serve on a fire board over there in Broderick. And just before we consolidated our fire boards to save money. And so I've been, I've been more than just a little concerned about fire safety over the years. Thank you.
All right, that's our only request to speak. Mr. Mayor, President Viegas.
Earlier, you mentioned that a new change effective January 1 was going to be the sprinkled residential. Is there a minimum square footage for that?
All residential construction, to include townhomes and condominiums in the state of California, will be sprinkled.
Really?
Starting January 1st.
Wow, all of them? That's amazing, okay. Interesting, it's expensive, all right.
All right, this is a workshop only, this item will return at a future date for first reading. So, thank you. That brings us to council calendar. Ms. Richardson.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I just wanted to point out that our next meeting this month is going to be on the 17th, and the city offices will be closed on the 11th. On this Monday at 1:00, we're going to be having the Harbor Boulevard interchange ribbon cutting. It'll be out at the Baker Square site. And also on the 24th, the Up for West Sac Executive Board meeting has been canceled. I'm in the month of December, the chamber and the city are going to be hosting a Santa's Breakfast on the 4th of December, which is on your calendar. And our tree lighting is going to be on December 10th. And we're also looking to do the all-important swearing in on December 1st, assuming that the election results are certified by then.
All right, as part of the, so we'll be doing that as part of the regular city council meeting?
I think we're going to start a little bit early, hope to start a little bit early, and then certify the results, do the swearing in, and then have just a brief reception and then go on with the regular meeting.
Okay, because there is a port meeting that night too. So what happens?
I think the port meeting, there was.
So it should be a very small meeting. We anticipate one or two items only. So that they would start at 5:00 and be over.
Oh, and so the council meeting and swearing in would start at 6:30 or something like that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, super.
We get to kick them off, two or two boards, or one board, one council, same night?
No.
Because there is no board.
The members of the port commission are not required to be members of the city council. So the term on the port commission is different.
That's right, it's a different period.
Right, okay, any questions? Oh, your term last fall 2018? Sorry, you drew the long straw. Any questions on the calendar? Same then city manager report?
Nothing this evening except to congratulate the mayor and council member Johannes.
Thank you. City attorney report? Staff director for members of the council?
I do have one.
Mr. Kristoff.
Toby or Carol, could you give me a, a schedule of the street sweeping? I mean, it seems like it's really hit and miss. Is it every two months? Is it every three months? What is, I don't, I really don't know.
It's once a month, but we can get you a schedule. It actually varies a little bit because some of the areas get more frequent sweeping.
Okay.
But in residential areas, it's once a month.
All right, all right, we have no future agenda item requests? Mr. Biers moves.
Second.
Who seconded it? Who seconded it? I heard the voices, it actually sounded like the Desma's voice, but maybe I'm just tired. All right, so moved in second, all those in favor please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, same then motion carries, meeting is adjourned.